Hi ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting in beautiful King William County. Olivia, call it over.
Mr. Muskowski?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Earhart?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Folks, would you please rise for a moment of silence following to me with about the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And board members have reviewed and I have a motion for adoption on any agenda.
Mr. Chairman, will you add the agenda presented?
Olivia?
Mr. Greenwood?
Uh, Mr. Cusman. Mr. Chairman, you had suggested striking nine, nine B. Are we gonna leave that in?
Well, if you want to carry some of it over, I mean, I don't know how much discussion we just had in that one.
Well, look, I'm gonna be honest, I was, Mr. Earhart called me on the way here and asked me some of my opinions on some emails he sent that I had not had a chance to review because they came in, again while I was on vacation, on the backs of several other emails, and I had seen, you know, the emails up front, but not some of these attachments they sent. I personally haven't had a chance to review his commentary, so if that's something that we, you know, want more time for, I haven't a chance to.
So do you want to discuss all the suggested edits, or do you want to table it till the next meeting, since you were the one that made that suggestion?
If you're gonna do parts of it, I'd rather table the whole thing until the next meeting. And that gives you kind of a...
So if we're gonna table it, then we need to...
I know we already got a motion out.
Well, I'm gonna have to amend it though, if you get the, the testimony prepared.
Well, the revisions that I went over at the work session are the revisions that the HR department, the finance director and I are recommending. What Mr. Earhart is speaking about is something that was not a revision that I had recommended. I didn't even look at that section. And it deals with grievances impacting elected board members. So my recommendation, my resolution is strictly for what we discussed at the work session.
But we're gonna have to revise it now and then potentially revise it again. We want to act on it twice, because my question to the board members, do you want to act on it twice, or do you want to act on it more?
I'm good with doing it.
I don't see a huge problem with that, but plus I think if we're just solely focused then on, you know, the issue that you had raised, that I had seen, then yeah, I think that's probably handled separately. It probably needs more conversations than it has. So I'm happy to advance what we had already reviewed and discussed.
We'll act on the personnel policy twice.
Yes.
Okay.
We weren't...
Not an efficient...
Yes, I mean, we've kind of...
Okay.
So to be clear on this, we're not, we're not gonna revise this issue, be, that's what we...
We are gonna go forward, be with recommendations and discuss that at the county administrator's.
The things we had already reviewed and discussed at the work session and didn't further discuss. Mr. Earhart wanted to discuss something else in the policy as well that was above and beyond that.
Okay.
But I find acting on what we've already reviewed and discussed and then continuing on what you...
So we're back to the motion as it is?
We are.
And I think I had a second, Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Olivia?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Muskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Next item up is public comment period. One opportunity, three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. You please come forward now and identify yourself and your district.
Mr. Chairman, Board, my name is Ben Drishumayne of District Four. I wanted to just express with you guys tonight that over the weekend I received several questions about some stuff that was going on with the school, or some stuff that was purchased, and it was just, it was just going crazy, and people were just making all these accusations and stuff. So I did what most people should probably do is contact their school board representative, talk to her, she cleared it up for me. It was actually a lot of misconception, and I thank her for her time, and I'm just hoping that other people will do the same. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone coming forward, I will put it in the public comment period. Consent agenda, could we have an approval at a minute or a discussion?
I approve, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Olivia?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Muskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Presentations, we have none. Old, old business, update on Hamilton Homes Middle School renovation and expansion. Dr. David White, superintendent of King William County Public Schools, and Gordon.
Gordon Fransick, he unfortunately he had an accident, we're not doing here, so I do have Mr. Eddie Evans here. If you all want to come up and sit right here before you're ready for your presentations.
Chairman Hodges, members of the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Tassanari. Want to thank you for allowing me to come before the Board to share an update with you regarding the Hamilton Homes Middle School project, the ABM Energy Savings Project, and the school division's accreditation status. I would like to introduce our guests today. I have Mr. Tom Huber from ABM, Mr. Bill McDermott from ABM, and Mr. Eddie Evans from Blue Justice Architect. And they will share their presentations after I give my presentation. First and foremost, I would like to address social media comments posted by the King William Tea Party. Yes, I do have a shower in my office, but that was not a personal request by me, and it was specked out in the original plans for the renovated school board office. The total cost of which was thirty-three hundred dollars. If I do choose to use it, it will likely be during inclement weather, when I am on the roads at three or four o'clock in the morning, trying to assess road conditions and determine whether or not to open schools for the day. Rather than returning home to change, I can prepare myself at the office. With that being said, if anyone has needed a shower during an emergency situation, it will be available for use should I receive a request. How Showergate became the focus of this year's election, I can only imagine. What would be a better story that unfortunately does not fit the narrative of some of our elected officials is how King William County Public Schools is implementing a four point nine million dollar capital improvements plan that is not costing the King William taxpayers a single dime, as it is paid for through a guaranteed energy savings lease. This was falsely reported by the King William Tea Party to be an additional request for money from the schools. Or how we will be saving the division roughly four point two million dollars over twenty-five years through our partnership with Sun Tribe Solar to cut the cost of electrical energy supplied to our schools. Now that is newsworthy. However, the elected officials who choose to billify cannot run for office on a platform that highlights our tremendous cost-saving initiatives, and that is very unfortunate. Regarding our school's accreditation status, we remain fully accredited. However, we in education will always need to address fluctuations in student performance from year to year. This past year, we saw a drop in our third grade reading scores, and like many divisions within the state, we are determining how best to address this issue, just as we did with math two years ago, where this year we saw a thirteen-point increase division-wide in our scores. We have already made several changes at Cool Spring Primary and Quinton Elementary Schools to bolster our reading scores. In addition to administrative changes, we are realigning the curriculum pacing guides, working with teachers to better understand the implementation of balanced literacy, developing a prescriptive master schedule to ensure each component of balanced literacy is taught daily, including writing, creating a daily intervention schedule to support all students reading below grade level. We created a book room of leveled just write books to accelerate reading comprehension, providing embedded professional development sessions to dive more deeply into the elements of balanced literacy, and revisiting classroom groupings to address equity issues. Mr. Hanson, while you were able to read in the...
Why not, Board? If you're not to address anything, you're not the moderator. Excuse me.
While we were able to read the Richmond Times-Dispatch and ask about our reading scores, I wish that you had asked me about the increase in our math scores, which I mentioned previously, or our history scores, which rose by three points, or our science scores, which continue to keep pace with state average. So by just looking at one set of data points, you fail to see the true picture of what our students and teachers have accomplished. You mentioned that the citizens of District Four are disappointed in my performance. However, neither the fourth district school board member nor I have received a single call or complaint. If you would be so kind as to provide me with the names and numbers of any citizens in your district who may have complained about my performance, I would be happy to address any valid concerns and share all the data with them. I will also share with your constituents that King William County Public Schools continues to be accredited in spite of the fact that you have not supported the school division or any of our initiatives since before I arrived in King William County, which is again unfortunate. So while I appreciate that this is an election year, and you are hoping to pull in as many votes as possible, for me, it is a Monday, a week prior to the start of a new school year, and we are celebrating the growth that we made during the previous year, while preparing to address the real issues facing the division and the students that we serve, and not the half-truth concocted in your student area. Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I have some questions and comments over the side that you brought up.
Listen, they haven't finished their presentation.
They're talking, they're gonna be talking about the building, they're not talking about what he brought up about...
Mr. Evans, if you could go forward and give your presentation, or we share with some of my mates.
That's a true point.
So you, wait a minute, wait a minute, let the chairman make the ruling.
There's no question to answer here, right there, Mr. Hanson.
So we were, I will address this issue with him and his accreditation after they're done with the Hamilton Homes. We can deal with it. Thank you.
Chairman Hodges, members of the Board, my name is Eddie Evans, I'm with Blue Justice Architect. I apologize for Gordon Fransick not being here today because he's suffering from a personal injury, and we're hoping he's gonna have a speedy recovery. So I'm gonna do my best to give you a little bit of an update on the Hamilton Homes school project and hopefully answer any questions you may have. Right now, as it stands, the, the building project is coming to a close. We have met substantial completion.
Do we have, we have a presentation or a handout or anything, or we just go listen and read?
I don't think that's working right.
Mr. Fransick was not able to make it because of the injury, so I asked Mr. Eddie Evans to come.
He's talking about something.
For this one to be done.
Okay, okay, there's nothing on, there's nothing to view or for the citizens to see or anything, and we're going forward.
We will have something with Mr., with ABM.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's okay. So we, like I said, we, we have reached substantial completion for the school project right now, and essentially that means that the school can use the facility for its intended purpose. There are still minor things here and there that need to be completely finished, but for the most part, I think the school is operational for its intended use. I know that we're scheduled sometime middle of next week for Mr. Fransick and potentially myself as well to come in and start punching this to see what items do remain that are unfinished, so that we can get that completed as soon as possible as well. My focus today is to essentially kind of go over any questions that the Board may have about the progress of the school project and to answer any questions that you may have. And also I would like to, I understand there's a little bit of a question about the shower in Dr. White's office. As he stated, that was in the project early on, and when we first started looking into this, there's a trend, if you would, in administrative facilities for someone such as Dr. White in a superintendent position, that they spend numerous hours, not only during the day, but early in the morning and also after school for meetings and what have you. So they do like to, if possible, have a shower where they can freshen up and get ready for other things that may take place. Also, you know, when there's inclement weather, sometimes there's snow that keeps the superintendent and other faculty members from leaving the building, you know, in their normal schedule. So they have a facility to go to and freshen up if they need to. So I just wanted to, you know, let you know one of the reasons that was installed in his bathroom. So with that being said, if you have any particular questions about the school project and where we are, I will have to answer those right then.
Chairman? Since we're talking about the shop, do you understand that we have discussed in several meetings with regards to the budgetary needs of Hamilton Homes renovation, the priorities of Hamilton Homes renovation, and in fact, we discussed several times that certain items had to be cut in renovation years. At the time, we did not have the funding early on or whatever period of time that this decision was being made about the shower. My question to you is, is a shower for the superintendent more important to the items that we had to cut in the renovation for the students?
Well, I have a list of all those items in front of me right now that I could look at, but I would say that generally, when you're looking at a school facility, of course, items for the students and faculty in order to utilize the facility the way it's supposed to be are critical to the project. When you talk about certain items that also could be critical to the use of the facility, such as the superintendent or anyone else that has to remain there during certain periods of time, I wouldn't say they're critical, but they're necessary in a lot of cases.
You're familiar with this line included in the...
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, hold on, he's already asked one question, so I'll just cover it. Mr. Chairman, I can probably fill the gentleman in on how many things are on that list that had to be cut, and there are no things on that list that had to be cut. We didn't cut anything out of the proposed specs of the renovation. We chose to add some things to the renovation and chose not to add other things that were requested, but nothing from the original specs of that renovation were cut at the behest of this Board or any other Board due to cost.
May I respond as well?
Absolutely.
In response to your question, there were three items that we added additional with the funding that we found in the bond. That included the foyer, security foyer area, that included gymnasium. And then the third thing we looked at was the, was the roof. The roof priority, so we backed out the gymnasium because of the issues that we had with this. And so we're still looking with the remainder of the bond rights to address the roof issue.
So as a follow-up, would you pass that? I recall that we had discussions, you can have a copy of this, I recall, this is a page from the actual ad that's built. I recall we had some interesting discussions regarding the girls' toilet area and those type, the showers in the girls' room, and why we could and could not improve some of those areas. My point, and I don't, I apologize, Mr. Muskowski, I do not remember specific, earlier than this, discussions regarding a shower in the supervisor, in the superintendent's office. My recollection is that, again, I said I don't recall these being made, or this specific item being brought up prior to this discussion. And I don't recall seeing anything on the original plans regarding this. But my consideration again, and you had this, is I could see on this page the girls', the ladies' shower area, and the other shower areas as opposed to your shower area. I think I've made my point with regards to spending money on your shower and importance of your shower as opposed to the student needs. I have nothing further on the subject. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I have nothing for that.
I'll be there right in a bit. Next, Mr. Chairman. Well, oh, I'm sorry, I have other questions, they're not the only two that can talk. Anyway, going on to more pressing matters, since we did allow the roofing to be done, has that been fixed too, or was that not? I know we talked about, might I be able to get to it till fall, was that still?
Where we are with that is that because the RFP, we only had one bid to come in, which was way overpriced. We've, we're looking at, since we're working with ABM now, we have their roofing contractor who has done an amazing job on the high school, and hopefully we'll see some of the work that's been done in a very short amount of time. We're asking them to give us some pricing on what they can do, and hopefully what we can do then is come back and present that or get that work done, since that is the most pressing item, as we've said before, to fix the roof.
And then is this gentleman the one that's gonna talk about the financial, or is that just questions with the actual...
Talk about what, I'm sorry?
The financial parts, like he said, there's some rumors, I just wanted, is that another gentleman?
About which one, about the...
Just like everybody's saying, that all these, oh, like it was on the news, overruns and all that. I just wanted him to point out that there weren't any overruns, we're within the amount of budget we're all...
We originally had the amount that the bid came in at, and of course, because of unforeseen circumstances, we had to do change orders to make sure we remedy those issues. Speaking with county administrator, Ms. Tassanari, she apprised of the fact that there was additional monies that could only be spent at Hamilton Homes. So we are going to utilize the rest of the remaining funds as best we can to address any further issues with Hamilton Homes Middle School.
Right, thank you so much.
And again, the roof is the most pressing because of its age and its useful life.
And gentlemen, I ruined the part that they've just built.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Go ahead.
Shower is, is not as big an issue to me as the leaking roof. I did receive a call that the rooms are flooded, that there's mold starting to grow in the rooms already. Is this, is this...
We just had a round where there was some infiltration of water.
One of the new classrooms is flooded, it couldn't even be used.
There was some infiltration of water, and that's why we're looking to get that remedy. But that was not a roof issue, I understand, there was some, some way that came in through...
Water has a mind of its own, I mean, just because it goes at one point doesn't mean it's coming out at, you know, the same point.
And we're already looking to address that. Matter of fact, Lockbridge is already on that, and they're seeking a remedy already.
Okay, and that's not gonna impact use of the classroom and such?
As my last report, we should be open on time on Tuesday, September 30.
The documents that we were presented at the work session, we're not, are we gonna discuss that in terms of cost? And, you know, if there was like additional changes that were presented, where are we, are we looking at, like...
No, I recall the sheet, they weren't like documented as to what necessarily they were, it was like change orders.
It was like asbestos, I'd be at like thirteen or forty thousand or something.
Those are the change orders.
Yeah.
Those are all the things that have happened since the implementation of the project with unforeseen circumstances.
So where do we stand in terms of the money that was allocated, how much money remains, what's the money gonna be used for, and how does that tie into possibly putting a repeater in the schools?
Right now, the money that we have available, based on the last numbers, is roughly a million dollars. However, there have been some things that we have addressed, so a little bit less than that. And what we're going to do, we are first want to remedy the roof, and then within remaining monies that we have out there, we're going to look and see what are our best efforts to help the school. I know you've been interested in the repeater, we've also discussed that as part of our safety plan. My concern from the information that I've been given is that the repeater currently would work on our radios, but not the county radios, because that has been completely, yeah, as far as what they're going to do. So it would be beneficial for our first responders, is my understanding, for repeaters within, for our radios.
And the repeaters with SureSauce and EMS and all that is under a different program that we're looking at.
Yes. But if we can help out, I mean, if there's some monies that's left over that we only can use at Hamilton Homes, I don't see if we have remaining funds of issue of us helping to support that, because it is for the safety of our schools. The other three, however, we cannot use that bond money to address that at the other three schools. But it depends on how much money we have remaining, and then the cost of the repeater.
And back to this classroom, there was some leakage, or were they standing in three foot water?
No.
That's worth flooding.
I've, I heard three people on England, so that could be exaggeration.
I added that, I mean, that's not just some water.
We have water infiltration.
You heard flood.
You got two inches of water on top of your carpet, it's a flood.
It's not a flood. Go ahead, go ahead, so anybody else on the board have any question?
No, as long as we've got whatever that issue was, because that was one that had been, brought to my attention as well, not maybe to the point that it was, you know, Noah's Ark was called in, but yeah, certainly a water intrusion concern was brought to me as well. So, yeah, as long as I'm on top of that, that's...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Gordon Fransick and myself received some photographs from the contractor showing pictures of some of the classrooms with water standing in them. It was really just spotty areas that we saw of waters, we didn't want to see a room that had a lot of water standing throughout it. I don't know what it was right after the rain, but I know that the contractor and his superintendent spent the best part of half a day trying to find out where the water may have been coming in, and I know they're still kind of looking into that, so they're gonna try to figure that out, and we're gonna be there involved in too, and try to get to the bottom of it.
Well, the courthouse is leaking too, with all the leaks and rains. Houses are watering, I don't know what to do about that, other than bring in the experts to look at it, and they still have to figure it out.
Thank you, I would have ABM come to talk about their, come and talk about the energy savings project. And I brought this in again because of the misconceptions that I've seen out there about this project and where the money is coming from. This did not cost our taxpayers a single dime. This comes from what we are saving in, in getting this work done, from the energy savings from this. And I thought it best, like I said before, if you want to talk about what we're doing in our schools, please talk about the positives, what we're doing for our kids, how we're saving money, because the buildings had been in disrepair for some time from not getting the proper preventive maintenance. So I thought that this was an innovative way for us to pay for that and not ask you all for more money. So, Mr. Huber, can you please stop the way?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name is Tom Huber, I am the project manager, construction project manager for ABM. We are doing the energy performance contract with the school system. I'm here to provide a construction update, a quick, a quick overview of the contract. Some of the energy conservation measures that we're implementing are new LED lighting in all four schools, except where they, Hamilton Homes, the new part of Hamilton Homes, they've already got nice new LED lighting. New energy-efficient electrical transformers in all four schools, new energy-efficient window film district-wide as well. A new building automation system, which are HVAC controls, those are at King William High School and Quinton Elementary School. New water conservation measures at King William High School. I'll get to some details of these other conservation measures as we get to the... I'll get to some details of these other conservation measures as we get through the program, but I didn't really include any pictures of toilets for the water conservation measures, I figured that a toilet's a toilet. New HVAC rooftop units and air cleaners at King William High School. New energy recovery fresh air ventilator at Quinton. And the PC power management software that will turn the PCs off at night, and if they detect a long period of inuse, put them in hibernation mode. And as we discussed, a new roof at King William High School. The lighting upgrades, which are division wide, what we're doing is retrofitting most of the existing frame fixtures with new electronic ballasts and LED bulbs. Where we can't replace or renovate the existing frames, we are replacing the existing fixtures. Those are primarily in areas of gym, outside wall mounted fixtures and places like that. Some areas are receiving motion sensors to ensure that the lights are turned off, if the lights go out after a period of inactivity. As of today, the classrooms, although retrofitting the classrooms is 100% complete, and the remaining work for the lighting upgrade will be substantially complete by this Friday, we're on target for that. The work that's continuing is in the corridors, common spaces, and the exterior. We concentrated on the classrooms first, because the new teachers were coming back last week, and we want to get the classrooms ready for students for the beginning of the year. There's a photograph of the new lighting at King William High School. The lighting in there is brighter, but it's also cleaner. I didn't, did not understand what cleaner light was until I was a facilities director of the school back in Milwaukee, put LEDs in our gym, and the light is not only brighter, but it's cleaner. You can see, see better for action, sports, high movement activities, things like that. It's really, it's a nice, it's a nice light in the gym. Also, district wide, we replaced the older electrical transformers with new figuratively and literally green transformers. They operate substantially cooler, they consume substantially less power when they're stepping down the voltage from one panel to the next. District wide, we installed the energy conservation film, or window film, in all four schools. And you can see here a before picture, I got this picture so you can see it before and after in the same shot. The narrow window in the middle is before the window film, and the larger pane to the left is after the film's been installed. They, in this particular shot, the film is on the outside, whereas the vast majority of the window film is actually on the inside of the windows. The window, the film on this, these particular types of windows, because of the type of glass that had to install on the outside. But, again, the vast majority is on the inside. And in addition to reducing the heat gain, the reflectiveness does provide a degree of security, additional security. The building automation system at King William and Quinton is, allows the operations team to set temperatures in all the spaces. It allows them to control when a space is occupied, so that if the space is not being used, or is scheduled not to be used, they can adjust the temperatures in that space to help conserve electricity. This particular shot right here is an example of some of the tagular data, if you look closer at it, you're going to see a bunch of zeros, because it hasn't been populated yet, but that's what the operational folks will see. And in addition to that, there's a graphics version, it'll show them the air coming back in, what the temperature of air coming in, the temperature of air going out, what the unit's doing, how it's operating, and some other nice features that allow them to stay ahead of any potential HVAC problems, particularly in the classrooms. These are one, this is one of the 56 new rooftop HVAC units at King William High School. You can see the older units on the left, and the new energy efficient, high efficiency units, air handlers on the right. They also, we're also including a cold plasma ionization air cleaner. These are devices that actually attach to the air handlers in the units, and they clean the air that's coming back in and out of the classroom. And we don't have to induce as much outside air to dilute the air, to make it, to make it better with these cold plasma ionization cleaners. And another added benefit of that is it helps eliminate odors. It doesn't strike out odors completely, it doesn't eliminate 100%, but as smells do enter, come back through the return air, then the ionizers help eliminate that smell. The roof, right now, the roof over the gym and the band room are complete. You can see the picture on the left is the old roof, one that we're replacing it. New shingle roof over the band room, the gym is 100% complete. And now that the work on the roof, on the remaining roofs is substantially complete, the roof will start coming back behind all that other work that took place on there. We didn't want to put a new roof down, and then all of a sudden get up there and start taking out a bunch of ductwork and replacing a bunch of equipment, but it'll be cleaner and easier. To recap, we started work July 1st, start work on site July 1st. And today, we're approximately 78% complete, which represents about three and a half million dollars worth of work in seven weeks. We're on target to have 95% of the interior work complete by Labor Day, Labor Day is a big milestone with schools. Our current focus is the final tie-in at the King William High School roof unit to the building automation system. We're testing and balancing the airflow of all these new units to make sure that they're bringing in the right amount of outside air, that the return air is going back in, is the right amount of return air, and the air pointing into classrooms is the correct CFMs. Replacement of the heat recovery ventilator at Quinton, that will be after Labor Day. That unit is a large special order unit that requires a long leak time. However, this particular unit is in a mechanical yard outside the elementary school, so we don't have to be inside the school and do anything. It's removed from most of the areas outside, we can do that during the day with minimal to no disruption to the instructional process. PC power management software installation will take place after all the PCs are up and running, so that they can check them all out, just make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to do, and after all the PCs get turned back on after summer break. And then completion of the roofing at King William. The roofing portion will take another several months to complete. There's a lot of pertinences, there are a lot of steps, there are a lot of items on the roof that have to be worked around, and it's just, I won't say it's a slow process, but it's not as easy as just re-roofing like the gym, where it was clean and easy, and there's nothing in the way. And before I get to any questions, this shot that you're seeing now, let's see if I can play this video. This is a 20 second video that we shot with a drone that ABM has donated to the school system. Mr. McDermott will speak just a little bit more to this drone. That didn't want to work. Sorry about that. Basically, it's a drone shot, just the drone's sitting there, and it scans the entire roof of the high school. It's like I said, it's a quick 20 second video of what's going on from the drone that Mr. McDermott will speak about in just a minute. Can I answer any questions?
There's going to be a follow-up presentation, which is regarding to this renovation of the high schools.
Upon completion.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yes, upon completion.
The question I had is, if this is such as the superintendent's a high, an area of neglected maintenance over the past years of his tenure, why are we doing it now? Why wasn't addressed soon? How did you get into this?
I'm the construction project manager, I can't answer that question.
These are issues that were there prior to my tenure, before coming here, but it was not appropriated for you to deal with these issues. So I have come in and working with the school board and others, we have looked at ways how we can mitigate some of these issues. So that's why we're bringing them. And again, 4.9 million at zero cost to our taxpayers.
You've been superintendent how long, sir?
Three years.
And none of this has been addressed until now?
We didn't have one.
Well, you don't have them on the map, you found an alternative, why didn't you do it sooner?
Because we were just introduced to them, and they had to do their assessment to see what we could do. So, for the past year and a half, they have been assessing to make sure that they can make the necessary improvements for us.
Mr. Chairman, that roof was last repaired when I was in high school, and I can assure you that was not that long ago.
But these maintenance issues go way back.
Yes.
Way beyond this board, way beyond your tenure, so it's not, it just wouldn't be, if it wasn't visibly leaking or falling apart, they weren't good.
Thank you, we're still going.
But, Mr. Chairman, the statement that the superintendent said was that this has been a neglected area. He's been superintendent for three years. My question to you is, and you accept this proportion of the past three years, and a resolution now?
Absolutely.
Thank you, it was out of the way of litigation, I really love that.
So, the one question that I had last time, and I'll ask it again, just for education of people who weren't here,
because I've got a good crowd tonight. The, a lot of the hardware with, you know, the durable goods with the lifespan on it, the term of your deal, we expect those things to out, or last at least as long as the term of your deal with the school.
That is, yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. I'll say, just as far as the LED lighting goes, just from a personal experience with that, if anyone's skeptical about the amount of savings that are available there in the last year, I've added 1,600 square feet to my humble little facility that I manage, and converted in the meantime all of my lighting to LED, and have saved over 60% a month on my electrical bill. So just that step alone is huge cost savings, and these other ones as well. So, I applaud the innovation, thank you and your staff for the work in getting this done, and thank you and your people for giving us the opportunity to address these much needed issues. Although, man, where were you three years ago? Thanks for letting me read your presentation.
And Mr. Glenn McDermott, if you, oh, I'm sorry.
I want to echo Travis in terms of thankful that this project has come to fruition, that, you know, that the cost to the citizens is non-existent. If something fails, you know, whether it's a heat pump, you know, whatever under, what's the process for replacing it? Does the school board go back through the manufacturer, the vendor, how's that?
There is a warranty period on the mechanical equipment that, we pick up some of it, and then after a certain period of time, the manufacturer picks up that one.
Sir, will we be receiving a copy of this, your material?
It's actually on the hard drive right now, so if the schools would.
If it was, that's fine, as long as it's included in the agenda, I appreciate that. It was a chance for review and for communication with the citizens.
Mr. McDermott, you have a presentation, and this is a presentation that ABM gave to the school board last week, and I thought it would be nice just to see how they're working with us, and some of the things that they're doing to help improve King William County Public Schools, and to help us provide opportunities for our teachers and students.
We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm going to piggyback on the drone picture here. Actually, what we've done, and we call it ABM cares, that's where we're involved in the community and the education of the students in the community. We love this project, we saw an opportunity here, and ABM has donated a drone to the school system. The reason we've done that, there's a new IT director, Rachel Martin, and there's an opportunity for educational improvement in the school system, having the IT group develop a curriculum around the drone project. It's got all kinds of possibilities for the schools, for filming band practices, filming GROTC events, a lot of different things within the school, and it gives the kids an opportunity to be very creative. And there'll be several different classes involved, and I'm sure more than we know at this point in time. The art class will be involved, the physical education process. So we're really excited, this is the first time that ABM has done this nationally, and we do these all over the country. And we thought a really great opportunity to do this here. Additionally, at the end of this, we'll have also a video where time lapsing the film of the high school that you'll see. We'll go through from day one when we started the project, we have a time lapse camera that time is set up, and you'll see the progress of the project at the high school. It's going to be very exciting when we clip this way. We're really excited about the opportunity of the drone. In addition to that, we're going to give the school a $500 scholarship. That's to allow two staff members to get, it's called an FAA 107 certificate to operate a drone as a commercial enterprise, if they want to do that, but it gives them flexibility to do a lot of different things. You can use it to track meets, there's all kinds of opportunities that we have thought of. But we're really excited about it, there are a couple of kids that already are involved in it, and we're really excited about the opportunities that they can bring to the school system.
Thank you, yeah, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm done, unless there are any other questions?
Yes, there are other questions, so may Mr. Chairman. As to your first statements, Dr. Chairman, or excuse me, Dr. White, let's discuss this issue about the school's performance in the SATs, or SOLs. I've read both the Richmond Times article this past week, and I've read the Tidewater Review article about your performance, the school system performance under your leadership in the SOLs, both of which are, and your statement to the Tidewater Review regarding your performance as compared to king and queen, amongst others. Every year that you have come in here, you have come in here and asked for support from the school, from our board, I recall, my recollection is that we have provided those supports for you, additional hiring, additional teachers, additional whatever materials. And yet, the current state evaluations document a failure, in my opinion, a failure in your leadership with regards to the performance of our school system. I'm not saying the teachers, I'm not saying the administration, I'm saying you. Your comments that were documented here in the Tidewater Review are a lot of, in my opinion, gobbledygook. Well, we can, our test represents a representative, but only a small number of students, and da-da-da-da. My question to you, why are you so much worse in your performance, in your leadership, than the school system in king and queen?
I will answer that, first of all, you're not an educator, and that is your opinion, and I'll leave it at that. You haven't offered me nothing.
I would respond to you, sir, I hold two master's degrees.
You're not going to be arguing.
Because I'm responding to you.
I didn't monopolize that, we get one in a town, we get one in a town, so I have some. Because I do have an issue. You stole my wife's beloved boss from William &amp; Mary, and she is very upset.
All I can say is thank you.
I thought you were going to say joking.
All right. Now, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I hold two graduate degrees. I'm a member of the National Honor Society in Business. Yeah, roll your eyes, see, my look, that's fine, I don't mind, I've seen your criticism before. And I'm also an distinguished graduate student at California State University. That means the best student in my class when I graduated. So I do have some expertise, I have taught in many areas and many options, from that of being in a military officer to being in the school district, in your school district.
But you are no longer.
Let's, at my request, I drop, yes, I stop, because I'm a board member, and there would be a comment.
Do you have a question here, or you?
Yes, no, the question is coming. That's my response to your comment that I'm uneducated, or I don't have the ability to make a comment about your performance.
So you are not an educator.
That's, I am an educator, but not in the school system. Now, let me explain to you very clearly, and make my position very clearly. My comments are not about our school system, they are purely about your leadership and lack of leadership from demonstrated articles and items in our school system. In my opinion, your leadership is a failure, as demonstrated by the SOLs. You asked me why I would not share with you the names of people who have given me information, or shared information with me?
No, I asked you to please share.
The reason I will not is you have a performance that I have heard from others, a propensity to fire people who disagree with you.
You can't fire a citizen.
I didn't say citizen, and your comment is out of order.
It is, Anthony.
Yeah, we wanted to get down personally about you, sir. I don't think you'd like it.
He just did.
No, I, I'm talking about me.
I understand your comment. Unless he did it his.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Did you not hear his presentation with a personal?
All right, the next item is nine B, Resolution nineteen dash fifty-four, recommendation, amendments to King William County Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual. Natasha Langston, Director of Finance. Good evening.
Resolution nineteen dash fifty-four is presented to you this evening in regard to information presented at the work session on August twelfth concerning updates to the county's policies and procedures manual. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Mr. Air, I know you.
You want to have a discussion before you have a motion?
If there's anything we can hash out beforehand, I'm, I'm, I'd be fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
Because you just have to change.
More motion.
Yeah, because you just have to change the motion anyway, so why would we ask that?
So page nine, page nine of forty-two. Mr. Greenwood, you might provide some assistance being employed by Compton, Virginia.
I hope you're not going down that path because I watched Compton, Virginia and I don't, their policies are not that good.
No, that's your opinion. You, you were the, it's like he does. What's the basis for having a rate of one and a half to one for comp time?
Uh, that is based on the U.S. Labor Department. That, 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 that's the law. Anything over forty hours is time and a half. We can't get around that. Unless it's fire EMS or unemployment and they have their own uh, set of standard, uh, work weeks because they don't work typical eight-five. Um, and, and I do have that out in front of us also. We, we wanted to discuss that. But it is the law. Um, it's, um, United States Department of Labor, Wage and Hour Division, Section seven K of FLSA.
If that's the law, then that's, that's what we do. Okay, so that answers the first question. I just didn't know the basis for it. I seem to recall it was one to one and that might have been a change at some point.
Well, not for overtime. I've never seen anything other than one to half overtime.
Okay, I couldn't, yeah, that's why I was asking. I didn't know the basis.
Anybody else have a question? Deal with this or, or if we need the other?
No, that was.
Just a change.
I did before.
I, I knew you. I knew you.
And, and no, I didn't on that section. Nothing else that we reviewed. I had asked any questions and I had at the work session.
Page thirty-three. The line seven fifty-three. Again, I believe employees should get approval for outside employment. If they're not going to get approved, then we should at least say they must notify their department, not should. Should has no bearing or ramification. Uh, so I would request that state county employees must notify and at no time shall secondary employment. Should is just too ambiguous.
Wait, wait, the second part, I lost you there. At no time, what?
Seven fifty-three, replace the word should with must. Seven fifty-five, replace the word should with shall.
Since we're bringing that up, um, now that I'm looking at it, the other state code is you have to have approval with your supervisor in advance. If I have to get it to give supervisor.
Yeah, agreed.
So I think they probably should have it because they shouldn't be getting a secondary job when their primary job is here.
Yep, you, you were not here at the last work session, but this, this was my comment back. We should have approval.
He brought it up, he's got it.
We should have approval. Uh, Mr. Tasaneri has said no. She's sitting up here now shaking her head, no.
And I, I, I was telling her about the Tasaneri.
We must have shall on there, sorry.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm with you halfway, all right? I'm fine with changing it to shall because as, as an employer myself, these are things that I feel like I, I have a right to know. Uh, at the same time, um, I, I've never adopted the, the policy of, of, you know, restricting my employees having employment outside unless it's for me, uh, in, in direct competition with me as I engage in, you know, the service. So I don't let them do, you know, side work or whatever. But, you know, I employ and have employed in the past, currently employed. I, uh, full-time firefighter, EMS provider that works for New Kent County, he works for me part-time. So I, so no, I don't, I, I don't agree with adding in any type of, of needed approval. You know, their responsibility is to doing their job for their supervisor in a, in a thorough, responsible manner. And if anything interferes with that, their supervisor will, then it becomes an issue, okay? And that's spelled out in the policy as well.
But now if it's should.
Uh, uh, well, that's just, so I'm halfway with you there on that. I'm, I'm fine if we want to change it to shall or must or whatever, uh, whatever wording, um, worked. Because, yes, I, I think that should be something that the supervisor should.
You know, fifty-five, why are we changing? I'm sorry. Why are we changing it to shall?
Well, because should carries more of a vague connotation than shall and, and, you know.
Legal implications as must and shall.
At no time should the secondary employment impact the employee's primary.
I'm curious, are you ready to note that?
Should is not the same as shall. You got the legal counsel sitting right next to you.
At no time should.
Then maybe I went through one-third of the way because I'm fine with changing that first should notify to a shall. Uh, but otherwise, I, I don't, I don't see the need to change anything else in that.
And like you said, if it does, then they get first.
There, they returned it.
I think you need to read the section as the law has it written now and of course the etalics will be added like we. But it says in the beginning that position in King William County is considered to be employee's primary occupation. And full-time, that's good. Employees may not, may not engage in other employment which presents a conflict of interest with the county or which interferes with or detracts from the efficient and effective performance of their duties with the county. That says shall not. I really think that the whole sentence is, now, the notify, shall notify, fine. Uh, that lets the people be aware.
That's the only place that I'm.
But, but the rest of that pretty much says the same thing that the first sentence says.
So you want to strike the last sentence?
Well, you could. I mean, it's the same.
No, I was going to leave for that and I just, I just, again, the only thing, if, if it'll bring you along, okay, then I'm good with changing that should, shall for the notify part. I do not want to change anything else about.
Seven fifty-three, line seven.
I agree with you.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
That's not tricky there.
Because it's covered in the first one, like you said, that should have covered your, your leaving.
All right, anyone else on anything in here that's been, but I know about. All right, Bob. What page?
The only other thing is, it appears to be, uh, two typos of commas. Commas are omitted. Uh, page thirty-six.
If you don't, without even looking at them, I'll go.
On line eighteen.
Hold on, I want to make sure he's right.
Line eight thirteen, it says if no fleet vehicle is available. I would suggest we put a comma there. No fleet vehicle is available. Then, same thing on line eight fifteen. When a fleet vehicle is available, comma, the county will reimburse. That was the only other thing I had aside from the other, um, one area that needs to be revised, which will be addressed later.
My English writing, the very holding wife, is not available. However, I don't think there's a comma required in that first sentence. The second one's meh.
When there's more than five words, it should be a comma. In a prepositional phrase like that.
We'll run it to ground, however this.
All right, you got it.
Okay.
Mr. Hanson had it.
Right. I don't think it's on either one. Definitely not.
Definitely not the first one.
Yeah, maybe the second.
So are we done with comments? Can we stop now?
I thought Mr. Hanson had it.
Hold on, sir, I was just mentioning.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we adopt the H R policy as amended this evening, replacing should with shall and resolution of the grammar issues.
Any further discussion? Leave it.
Mr. Aaron Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right next item is ten A, Public Hearing in Consideration of Ordinance zero eight dash one nine, amendment and amendment to the condition you permit the development of a single-family attached dwelling units associated with the properties of the R one residential zoning district, Ron Eddard, Representative. And everybody has that insert that he gave out, correct?
Yes, it has the last line on.
Page two.
Okay. Good evening. Okay, this is a request for a conditional use permit in order to, to allow for the continued use of an accessory dwelling. The site is located at thirty thirty-eight Venter Road. And give you a little bit of history on this request. Ms. Brown in two thousand sixteen hired a contractor to renovate her garage. Can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. Ms. Brown hired some contractor to come in, renovate her garage so she could use it as an apartment dwelling and her daughter and her daughter's family could be in the primary dwelling occupation. Back in May of, uh, this year, she discovered that the building permits and conditional use permits to allow this accessory dwelling had never been pulled. At which point she came into the office, paid a half vacation for conditional use permit, paid her fees and has been going through the process now to get the conditional use permit approved. Let's see, we have, um, just to give you an idea, let's see, down button. This property is located in, uh, Venter Heights. Uh, it's R one, uh, residential user in development. It, uh, has been, let's see, I think they bought the house in, um, two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen and renovated the, uh, garage. The, uh, went through all the processes, it is full, uh, this meets all our future land use map. The area is designated R one, it meets the comprehensive plan criteria, uh, urban residential. It's in the Alabamian District. And, there it is. Want to give you a picture of, this is the garage there. What she did is only the first floor of this garage has been renovated for her residents. Uh, the second floor is, uh, only going to be used for storage. So there won't be any problems with additional apartment use there. The, uh, public hearing for this, uh, conditional use permit was held on July second, or July of two thousand two, uh, two thousand nineteen. There were no public comments, uh, during the, uh, public hearing. The planning commission, um, heard the applicant, saw the presentation. They agreed for the staff recommendation to recommend the board of supervisors approve the conditional use permit for the use of this, uh, accessory dwelling. There was three. There were three conditional use, uh, conditions put on this permit application. Uh, the first one was that it would only be used for immediate families. Uh, the second one was that at no time could it be expanded from its current condition. In other words, the second floor couldn't be used as another apartment. Uh, the planning commission, after the hearing, um, decided to add a third condition to it that, uh, Ms. Brown go to the Department of Health to make sure that the septic system is adequate for the additional bedroom that this represents as an accessory dwelling. So, or, uh, the planning commission did recommend and the staff agreed that the board of supervisors should approve conditional use permit O two dash nineteen for Ms. Brown.
Do you question? Did letters go to both adjacent property? I only see one unless I'm overlooking.
Uh, if you need a whole.
There was a whole list.
Yeah, there's a whole pile of letters that were, um, all the adjacent propaganders and actually wanting a little bit further. That wasn't the fact we said.
I was just going to ask, Mr. Chairman, regarding this picture, I can see that there's a, it looks, appears to be a gas connection to this addition. Are they receiving separate bills from the gas company for these two separate living quarters?
If you don't mind, I'm going to turn to the audience and ask.
Well, that is actually not a gas, that is an HVAC unit.
Uh, that's fine. And that answers my question.
And all the other utilities are tied into the car.
Thank you. That answers my question. One other question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We did not introduce Mrs. Brown to, in your statement, uh, it says that she was introduced to a contractor. None, no one in the county introduced her to this contractor.
Oh, no, sir, this was, this is a private.
That's, that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Any further? All right, can you add anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, open the public hearing on ordinance zero eight, day four nine. As an individual, you have three minutes and as a, if you're the speaker for a group, you have five. Anyone that would like to come forward and speak? And, uh, under these circumstances, could you please give your address?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Mr. Tasaneri. I am Eugene Rivera. I'm twelve seventy Cummins Road. I am right around the corner from this. I have no problem with Ms. Brown's, uh, request. I think it's wonderful that she's doing that. My question is that if we allow this, I've been on the planning commission, been on the board before. If we allow this on a one acre lot, then what happens on a half acre lot or some other lot that happens? Are we not setting a precedent for allowing? It, it just seems that we're asking for forgiveness rather than permission, you know? And, and, and I, I think what Ms. Brown is doing is a wonderful thing for her family and I think it should be approved. But what is the precedent that the county is setting for future requests? Whether it's a half acre lot, three-quarter lot, this is an acre lot. I, I know the, the neighbors are saying they have no complaint with it, but are we setting a precedent? That's my own question. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, could I speak as a member of the planning commission?
I want you to think of that.
Yeah, you can. I can. You have that kind of a question.
Anyone else? Seeing no one moving, I will close that public hearing on ordinance zero eight dash one nine. And Mr. Greenwood?
I guess I wanted to bring up, like you said, I don't think it's setting a precedence for this. Like, uh, Ms. Brown said, they came in there, their original contractor should have told them all this in the beginning. She was willing to follow the rules. She did not know the rules. Her contractor at that time was going against all King William policies, I hate to say it, at that time. Sort of snubbing his nose at everything, but we won't go into that. She came after the fact, after she found out through talking to others that he didn't get any of these permits. She came on her own to come to bring this to the board of planning commission and asked to do that, so. And the board, planning commission did choose to allow it because of, she, like Ms. Brown's daughter is taking care of her now and it's a place for her to live. And I just wanted to put the, I think we all thought that was a great thing for her to do too. And I don't think it's setting a precedence for a state of lots and if it does, it is a conditional use permit. So she did all the things she had to do after the fact now, so. so. I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve it if I can now, or should I wait till?
There you go, you can do it.
I'll second it, and I'll, I'll say the point's well, well, well taken, and, and I would worry that the only precedent we'd be setting by doing anything else is just encouraging more people to do it.
And do the permits in right order of time.
This day and time, it's gonna happen more and more, as I well know, as I remember from my father.
And I, I, I'll, I'll make a statement, I commend the applicant for doing this, yeah.
All right, any further?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I agree with both my, both of the other supervisors, with the applicant's honesty and integrity is very, very commendable, and that she initially acted upon the instructions or the understanding with her contractor. I understand the issue, step aside, the issue of setting a precedent, but it's my belief and observation that we have several other within the county, several other folks who are living in adjacent apartments, or above garage apartments, or whatever, I'm, I'm lodged, there would probably be less than acre or less. I can certainly understand the, the consideration, but I do not believe that this particular one will set a precedent that's going to harm our community or harm the, or harm our community in the future.
Anyone else? Olivia.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Ordinance zero eight, day one nine is approved. All right, next item, public hearing in consideration of ordinance zero nine, day one nine, and ordinance ten, dash, one nine, for veteran exemption for the designation of qualifying vehicles as a separate class of personal property for local taxation purposes, and establish is the tax rate will be determined annually, entirely determined by the revenue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Tassary. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the ordinance that is proposed, oh nine, nineteen, for the veterans exemptions of personal property tax. You've got a section of the code that explains that you're just setting out a separate classification in the personal property book, that you'll be able to set a separate rate for that classification as long as it's less than the, the general rate for personal property, which is three dollars and sixty-five cents, so it can be any amount less than that. I think that the, the citizens that will be affected will probably be the same ones who are in our veterans real estate tax exemption program, and in the county, we have about forty-one folks, so maybe forty-one vehicles, because they only get one vehicle per, per household, and then in the town, we have nine. So, that, that kind of gives you an idea of, of what this exemption may cost, but that all depends on what you set the rate to be. Did you have any questions?
Does this set a percentage of disability? Is that already under federal law?
Yeah, it's already defined by the code, they, they have to have a, when they come to us for the real estate exemption, they have to have a letter from the, the VA that, that explains that they're a hundred percent disabled permanent.
Well, code, the code section here is anyone that qualifies to receive the special license plates under forty-six-two-seven-thirty-nine, and has obtained and displays such special license plates.
Any other question? This is start by you.
Well, I believe, Mr. Miskowski, you're putting the two ordinances together, one of them is the exemption from the vehicle license tax.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other one is the special classification, this is what Ms. Pearson was first talking about. Now, in both of them, the, the, ten nineteen is the, that is the separate class of personal property, and actually, that is set up specifically by the code, the language decision, the ordinance is taken straight from the state code, and it says they have to have lost the use of one of both legs, arm or hand, blind, permanently and totally disabled certified department veteran services. So, it says permanently and totally disabled as certified, okay?
Sorry.
The other one is the license plate, and basically, it's the same requirement to get the license plate in the state law, so it's, you know, the language, it's not a beautiful thing of drafting in the state code, but I think we covered it, it is, in fact, disability case, there's an ordinance, the license plate, they have to meet that requirement in the state.
And can we do both public hearings on both of them?
I think we have, the other, you can do it.
Anyone have any further questions?
And this isn't automaticism, Ms. Pearson, they have to, if they have to fill out something if they want it, and then you give it to them, they end up, we just don't search out to those forty-one, you give it to them, right?
Right, the code says they have to submit, sort of like they have to apply the, the real estate exemption, to, to receive that. Now, with the, the decal tax, that's gonna be done by their license plate, we can identify those license plates and exist those, but we have here a few of them.
Okay, do we have questions? Is there an application?
Not yet.
Okay, okay, that's, I didn't think there was, when we discussed this before.
This, I guess, it seems like the decal tax may go into effect this personal property book, because it could, and the, but the property tax exemption won't go into effect until next year's personal property book.
The other thing I would say, Ms. Commissioner, is that, yes, they do have to apply for the vehicle decal, which also, that's in the ordinance, and there's not a, you know, only upon request, let's say you decal, give them the rate, okay? But the, the, but it says upon request, you waive it, and so they're gonna have to make a request to you, and it says upon receipt of the application of written evidence that they're disabled personally. So, basically, they'd have to come in and basically show you that they have this disabled plate and make a request to you. It's not, you know, automatic off the deal.
Do they have to fill out or request this every year, or once it's applied?
I think that would be up to the commissioner. I think the D, the D, as long as they have the DA plate, I mean, you know, as long as they have their disabled plate that's issued by the state, and they continue to give that to you, then they will.
Yeah, we, we, we can't request them to do it annually with the real estate tax exemption.
Because the hot model doesn't work like that, if you want that, you have to ask for it every year, so this would be different. What you got, you got.
Now, you're talking back about the tax again.
Right, oh, right, mixing them up again, okay.
The General Assembly, in their infinite wisdom, did not allow the supervisors to accept them, okay? So, you're gonna have to improve the tax rate of one tenth of one percent, or something crazy like that, which means they won't, or maybe a tax rate of zero would suffice, but you have to set some tax rate, and you will do that in your annual tax adoption ordinance at budget time. You will set that, just like you do on an airplane, you set a different rate for airplanes, you set a different rate for these vehicles, it'll be added into your adoption ordinance at budget time.
Anybody here? Thank you. All right, and at this point, I will open the public hearing on ordinance zero nine, day one nine, and ordinance ten, dash, one nine. Anyone who would like to speak as an individual, come forward, you can pick three minutes, that is for group, you have five. Anyone that would like to come forward, please, do so now. Seeing no one coming forward, I close that public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, the votes are?
I was gonna say, I'm not looking at that one.
Oh, at one of your times.
All right, let's go with zero nine, day one nine, and I have a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
Olivia.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
It carries zero nine, dash, one nine, approved.
Make a motion, too.
The next one, ordinance, what's that, I'm sorry?
Same thing.
Yeah, is it, ordinance ten, dash, one nine, and you, sign your motion.
Second.
Any further? Olivia.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
The next item is item C, Resolution nineteen, dash, fifty-five, setting the personal property tax relief percentage for the personal property twenty nineteen building side, Pearson residential residence.
All right, so, for the tax relief, I do a calculation every year, and I have a spreadsheet for you if you'd like to see the, how it shakes out over the years. We came really, really close last year to hitting it exactly on target, so far, but it's, it's always a moving target because we're, we're still doing collections for two thousand and eighteen personal property taxes, and, but right now, we're, we're less than two thousand dollars on that target of hitting the PPTRA amount. So, I'm recommending the same amount this year, although our, our book is higher this year, we, we, we're seeing growth every year coming in our personal property categories. So, I think thirty-five percent should keep us pretty close at where we want to be, and I have a running tally here that I can get along with that.
What does forty-five do for us?
Um, well, I have, we had it forty-five percent in some prior years.
Chairman, are we discussing this now before a motion is made?
Well, I guess, you got, you got a question you can answer, if I may, Chairman, I don't know the problem.
My, my question is, what does forty-five do, and then relative to the administrative matters, if we're looking at personal property tax, and am I reading this thing right, that we're already four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars more that we collected this year? Under the, the back of the memo?
Yeah, I don't have it up with me, but I, I, I did see that, and I'm not, and I saw it in the, in your agenda packet, but I'm not sure if that's for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
That's near, same.
Salute all, two thousand nineteen, but it is also the prior years. Right, because we, we haven't, I, I have to run my personal property book by September first, so we'll be doing that in the next week. So, if we had forty-five percent tax relief, the last time we had that was in year two thousand fourteen, and we're quite a bit over our target of one point two million personal property tax relief from two thousand fourteen on that, the allocation model, but I can see that, you can see that.
And that target allocation is how much we get from the Commonwealth to administer this?
Yes, one point two million, we get, we get one point two million from the Commonwealth, that was set in two thousand five, and it, it has remained the same, it's, it will not change until the General Assembly decides to change that, if they ever do. When personal property tax relief started out, it was supposed to be your whole, all of your personal property tax, but the Commonwealth quickly realized that it was a very expensive program, that they couldn't afford to continue, so they capped it out, and at that time, they allocated it amongst the vehicle bases in the state at that time. And of course, like places like Northern Virginia, they got the lion's share, and, but this is what we get every year, to distribute amongst our taxpayers.
And have gotten the same amount for at least twelve years, it looks like?
Well, yeah, we've gotten the same amount, yes.
Well, I, I know that what we ultimately achieve moves, but what we get from the Commonwealth has stayed the same for twelve years.
Yes, it's the same since, I think two thousand and five is when they put this, the one point two million in, that's when they, they capped it.
Now, Mr. Chairman, the, the problem is, we've discussed this before, with any additional general fund money that, that gets used to monies the split levy, is, is I understand it, is that the case?
Well, the personal property tax, there's a special calculation in the split levy reconciliation each year, because we have to make sure that, because the town receives some of the PPTRA funding, so we have to incorporate that into our calculation, so we don't get the full amount from the town, it's a lower percentage, which then combines, but we don't receive their PPTRA money, the town receives it themselves, and then we receive the one point two, so.
Right, and so this becomes a fund that's segregated for school use only, so if we were to spend general fund money to expand the amount of, of tax relief, do we not then run into a pro-rata problem?
Correct, correct, these are one, this is one of the categories, like many of the other ones in the split levy legislation, that we can provide to the schools a hundred percent, if we so choose.
But we would have to manage at West Point.
No, if we were to do away with or reduce this amount, that would then impact what we support the schools operationally in their budget, and then we'd have to rely more on the real property tax, which would then create a potential issue with the town of West Point and the split levy.
Because we would be then allocating, we'd essentially be offsetting revenue to the school with general fund money by expanding the PPTR.
So, how much, how much are we talking about returning to the citizens if we utilize forty-five percent versus thirty-five percent?
Well, two thousand fourteen was the last time we had a forty-five percent personal property tax relief, and that was, that year, we overpaid eighty-eight thousand.
Overpaid?
We over, there was eighty-eight thousand more in relief given than what we got from the state. So.
And we're sitting on seven and a half million dollars of surplus, and we can't afford to give eighty thousand dollars back to our citizens.
That's your call.
I'm just talking aloud.
Well, but, we went through this at budget time, you're, you're missing the point.
I'm not missing the point.
That you are completely missing the point out of that, or you're just not listening to me, which is that if we do that, we've got to reconcile this out as part of the special legislation, that would mean that any general fund money we use to increase the, the revenue offset of this tax, we would have to then allocate to, essentially to the schools, okay? That, you then run into a problem where you've got to remit to a town an equal pro-rata share of what you would then offset that with.
How much is that amount?
You're gonna, they can do math here, but I can probably give you some type of back of the envelope number here.
An ideal situation, if we didn't have this split levy, probably would be great, but since we're one of the, only county that has it, I'm just, does West Point still have it, they still do, two, one of two counties in all the state that has it.
You got a contract in that, yeah, so we can quit talking about that for a while.
That's the thing, we can't get out of that.
I mean, we said you big dead dog, but it ain't no help.
I don't think I've got this number quite right, in trying to do reverse fractions here, but it, that's, that's the point, okay? Is that regardless of whatever relief you'd be giving, then you'd be then giving a, a, a handout to West Point.
Is it equal amount? I mean, how, how, how much are, are we giving West Point six thousand dollars, we giving them eighty thousand dollars, what are we giving West?
You would have to calculate that off the formula that's in split levy.
Okay.
So, you don't know that at this time?
So, we don't know, so we maybe, we maybe.
No, you've got, you've got, again, you've got to get data from the town, from, from their clerk, you've got to get data from our clerk, you've got to cross those numbers.
Eight thousand dollars, we have to give West Point six thousand dollars.
Uh, it wouldn't be that, it would be more than that, it would be somewhere around thirty-five percent of whatever number it would, we would have to give back to the town.
But that's not.
It's essentially, it's again, it's a pro-rata share.
It's still savings that we're giving back to the citizens of this county, and we're giving money to the West Point schools, it's almost a win-win to me. I mean, we're giving money back to the citizens.
Soon as you finish. Bobby, I, I do want to, because you've already looking at the budget for next year, and Ms., with Ms. Lambs, what would be your recommendation, would be the way, if you could go ahead and say whatever you were gonna say, first?
I would like, one, remind that the general fund unassigned is not just a law. a large amount of money that is just sitting there because we have overcollected. As a locality, it is extremely expensive to address the things that we address, from law enforcement to fire and EMS, to regional jails, libraries, you name it, just the daily operations of planning and zoning alone. And we are looking at some large expenditures coming up. We have radios that are going even millions of dollars purchased that are going to have to be replaced in the next seven years. That general fund assigned is our savings account, which will help us offset the cost so that we do not have to go out to the bond market and take on long-term debt. And so when you look at this and go, oh wow, there's 400 and some odd thousand dollars that we, you know, collected over what we projected in this one line item, well, that is not just the current year's collection, it's also prior year's collections that are being reflected in that. And we're always very conservative in the way that we set up our revenue expectations. Now, we do that for many reasons, but one of them is the split levy, because we realize that every year the schools have higher demands and higher costs. Part of the funds that we over-project, we collect, then get reconciled, some of it goes into the restricted for future school use. Every single year for the last two years, we've used some of that restricted general fund to offset the cost of the operations and the debt to the schools, so that the county is not picking up 100% of that. So, you know, I understand that, you know, give back to the citizens, give back to the citizens, but if you compare what we charge on either personal property rates or foothold or anything else, you're going to find that we're right there in line with other localities. Yes, we may be a little bit higher, we may be a little bit lower, but because of the split levy, we rely on those categories to fund our schools. We also, as a county, have fixed expenses. We support the regional jails, the library and the juvenile, um, activities, you know, the courts. We have all of these required costs. And so when you start going in and cutting away or reducing certain categories that we know we can dedicate to the schools and then leave some additional, you know, real property money for the rest of the county to operate, and trust me, we as a county, we are right there at the tipping point.
Maybe we should stop spending so much.
We're spending on required activities.
Ms. Tasciari, this is not a budget session, with all due respect.
You'd rather turn it into one, Mr. Chairman.
You see it as a savings, I see it as a demonstration of what we're taxing our citizens.
I do not see it that way.
Okay, alright.
And we, we don't have $7 million more than, we've got 30 million in debt, so we don't have any.
Well, even that, guys, that's kind of, look, okay, there's, I know it's campaign season, but I've always pledged, since I've been here, that I don't make decisions on campaigns, I make decisions on policy. And there's a reason that we put the split levy in place the way that it is. There was good sound reasoning, there were a lot of accountants, a lot of economists, a lot of lawyers crawling all over that thing, making sure that it was shipshape, uh, and there's a reason for every word and every formula that's in that thing. And so to blow a hole in that is just bad policy. I know it's a great election year thing, I know it sells well on Facebook, it is bad policy. It just is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
My comment is, I, I believe I understand the discussion on this issue, but some of it, I believe, is premature in that we're in the middle of a reassessment. We do not know what that reassessment is going to do. That may have a significant, may have a significant impact upon county revenues, which hopefully will have a positive assessment or impact upon split levy. But that's a very significant issue. I believe that we just honestly do not know at this time and the discussion may be, as the chairman has, someone has suggested, a little premature at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I believe a motion, Resolution 1955, please.
I have a second, yes.
Any further? Librarian.
Mr. Erhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye, in pass.
Oh. I think so.
Kind of neutralized.
Nothing, and I'm showing Mr. Erhart, if he has a board comment.
We'll play, I'm not done with the administration. We don't have, who doesn't have an opportunity to ask anything under the, the documents that are provided or other administrative items?
Yes, sir, you can, right.
Ms. Tasciari, how many inspections have we due under fire marshal program in the last year?
I could not answer that.
Why is that?
Because, um, the fire chief was handling those.
Who does he report to?
To me.
How many fire inspections have we due under safety program for our schools in the last few years?
I cannot answer that.
Why not?
Because I don't have the information.
Why don't we have the information?
Because the information, if there was any inspections done, were on the laptop that crashed and as I was told, that, um, he kept all of his files on the desktop.
With no backup, correct.
Yeah.
So what's the standard operating procedure for the county to back up file, especially essential records? What is our procedure?
Answer that.
It's, it's continuity of operations, alright, look at your hand down here.
I see that.
This is a FEMA, this is a state, federal, county, everybody has been required to have continuity of operations, alright? Vital records management, whether it's one inspection, which may or may not be vital, is something else. What is our policy? This, this is driving home to a bigger point, not just one fire safety inspection. What is the county policy regarding backup storage and handling essential records?
Well, to be very honest, we leave it up to the individual at this point, since we have just hired on a contractor, we've worked the last two years, we have been slowly working towards addressing these things.
So the county doesn't have a continuity of operations or emergency operating plan that identifies how essential records are to be stored?
We have COOP plan.
Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily address that specifically.
But, Mr. Chairman, I mean, in a situation like this, I mean, you're in charge of a very large county operation, lots of different departments, my understanding is that's possible for something between, that someone may fail to perform their, their duty or fail to do a certain performance requirement and then forget to tell you, or that that may not be noticed in a, in a, quote, timely manner. That's my perception, those things happen. Now, I mean, you're in charge of very large area and a lot of people, directors, report to you. That's how I would understand that such a situation could occur. And I don't know if that's what happened here, but that would be my understanding.
I bet you good trust what you're saying then to the employee and what I remember in that one is a lot of detail. He stood right there and told us he did a certain amount, I do not remember the numbers, uh, but I took the faith and that he did it. If they weren't gone, if the residents were gone, I, I don't know that there are required to understand the COOP to be retained, be that owner, we have to go.
We hadn't even done any inspections at all until, uh, yeah, he, that was the program that he.
Well, okay, if I might finish with this dialogue, okay, there's, there's, there's two points I'm trying to drive, drive home here. You know, we need to have a backup in place, you know, whether it's printed hard copies or whether it's a flash drive or some, we need to have some type of backup in place moving forward, you know, whether inspections were done or not, you know, it's, it's secondary to what I'm trying to drive home here. This is one of the, the items that under, under, um, VDM and Department of Homeland Security, this is a vital component of your continuity of operation plan. The other thing, um, in terms of this is, this, where is this program built? Why do we need to have this program under us? Why do we need to have expending taxpayer money for something which may or may not be, be, be being done and may or may not be being enforced?
I don't think we spend taxpayer money.
Well, if you talk about future training somebody, you know, you have.
No, but I meant right up to that.
Right, you know, future training somebody and, you know, vehicle and stuff associated with it. I talked to Steven Saitz, who is the, uh, fire marshal that serves this region, he said they'll take it over, it won't be any cost to, to King William taxpayers.
May I say something? Mr. Erhart, in my email to you today, I sent you information and in my email last week, I sent you information letting you know that the chiefs are working through this to make sure that if we hand it off to the state, that that's the appropriate thing to do, or if we retain it with our volunteer, Mr. Hardesty, then that would be the appropriate thing to do. Now, they had a meeting with him on Wednesday.
With who?
Mr. Hardesty, as I stated in my email to you today and to the rest of the board. And they need time to be able to work through this to make sure that whatever recommendation they made to me and then to the board is the appropriate one for the county.
So in the meantime, schools, daycares, things like that are potentially a safety issue. We have no documentation, any inspections were done.
Mr. Chairman.
If there, if there's a potential for liability, or is the county not performing these safety inspections?
Mr. Chairman.
Good.
We were not performing these inspections before we hired the full-time fire chief. This is something that he stood up of his own accord, recruited a volunteer to do them. We don't have any, now records on what was done or whatnot, he's gone, okay? This has been briefed with Ms. Tasciari, questions have been asked, questions have been answered, time has been asked for to make assessments of the program and to make recommendations from the chiefs to her, she can bring to us and we can make some decisions on this thing. I would chastise my colleague for the tone with which he set out this portion of the meeting. If we want to have an inquisitive tone with our staff and public, that's all only good, but a scolding and chastising tone, I think is well out of line. And I would just go on record saying, asking questions, no problem, but the way you started that out was out of line. I just want to say that.
Can we move on?
Can we move on?
Your, uh, on the board comment.
County Fest.
What? What's happening?
If you want. If I can even find the presentation. Thanks for something, Mike. Say what? Did you play us with the chairman?
Mr. Erhart, right now with the campaign.
Hey, there.
Season going, I, I have no idea what about. It is what it is.
Alright, so, thank you everybody for coming out, I appreciate you being here. County Fest was a, was a success, I think, this year for those who came out. It was, I think it went better than previous in the previous year. Some good times were had, I think some education was disseminated, here's our social services director, uh, we got some, some good input from, from folks, uh, got a new head start program, which got the brochure up on their, on their board. Sure Allison's not going to like this picture, but, uh, everybody was out there hardworking. We had to caution Tara about not trying to do too much and drinking plenty of fluid in her condition in the background and folks painting faces. There's somebody that we all recognize. Pitch. The outcome.
That's what it looks like in there.
Pretty dark. And that was not playing. Alright, so anyways, if you didn't get out to County Fest, Mr. Kite got the opportunity to get dumped as well, so I think, I think there was some good funds raised, I think they said Allison collected the most money, I think they threw a bunch of ringers in for the Little League, but, um, it was, it was a good time and, and it was good to have everybody out there, so I just want to put a plug in for Parks and Recreation and County Fest and all the effort that was done out there.
Ms. Lambs? Well, thank you, sir. I would just like to reiterate, reiterate my, uh, discussion with the superintendent of schools. Let me be very clear. I understand superintendent's position, I believe I do, but it is a mischaracterization of my position regarding the school district to try to state that I am against or I am not in support of the classroom teachers or the administration of the schools. My comments were directed directly at the supervisor, excuse me, the superintendent and his performance as reported in the Richmond Times and in the, um, the tide water review this past week. Questions as to why are we dropping behind King and Queen this year? And the response is, well, you know, Dave, Mr. Hanson, you're not an educator. As you heard me respond, that makes no sense to me at all. I presented my credentials, I have been an educator for many years, but I am not a school kid, a teacher, which I have the highest regards for. When you sit back and you think that for the time that, you know, that you stayed in an open meeting, that you have your super, for the last three years, maintenance has been neglected in the schools, that to me is something I think, believe an elected official should question, why has maintenance been neglected? I think it's wonderful that we have the service being provided to the high school. That is a wonderful thing and I think that should be highly commended. The demonstration, as I mentioned to you before, in my regard, speaking to people who have worked or do work for the schools, I have been told by people one-on-one that there are reprisals that have been made, contact contracts which have not been renewed. And for me to provide names of individuals to someone who is in the, uh, who I have been informed, it has a habit of not renewing contracts or doing reprisals, I think would be highly, um, inappropriate. I think it's really bad taste and youth that are still here, Steve, in my opinion, it's really bad taste for the director or the superintendent to turn his back and walk out of a meeting until the chairman says, Mr. Hanson, questions are completed, that's, you know, closed and that's it. Then you can turn your back and walk out of a meeting. Now, the, the chairman made that comment while Mr. Superintendent White was in the process of walking out of the meeting with his entourage. I think that's highly unprofessional, but very demonstrative of the superintendent's actions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you everybody for coming, it's like we started with a large group, thanks everybody for coming, it's like we had a pretty heated discussion on a few things, unfortunate about that, it is election year and like I said, I'm with Mr. Miskowski, I'm not running for anything that's going to be, get me elected if the citizens choose not to elect me for what I feel best for the county of Kingway, then I take that as a, they didn't like what I did, but I think that they do and, uh, there's other things, people have brought up about things that people have done, people need to look at everything people have done, things people have been convicted of, things people have gotten done, there are other jobs, just look at everything, I can't mention names because I don't want to be getting into trouble, so, um, I feel bad for Mr. White, uh, getting chastised for everything, like I said, it's just unfortunate that he let those roofs run down in three years, it happens sometimes, but, you know, that happens, but, uh, thank you everybody for coming on, everybody have a safe, uh, holiday weekend we have coming up, Labor Day, end of summer, starting of school year after that. Thank you for coming and as always, I have best interest of King William County in mind as superintendent. Thank you.
Mr. Miskowski.
Thanks everyone for coming, um, we're down to our usual crowd here. No one on this board has a problem with board members asking questions, with board members being inquisitive. I have always and will continue to have a problem with, um, framing it as some type of, uh, lording over or chastising type of, of, of whatever that was, so, um, I apologize to, to, to everyone tonight for the display, really, um, you know, we can do a lot better and I'm hoping what we will. So thanks again for coming, have a safe and happy. So thanks again for coming, have a safe and happy, uh, Labor Day, and we'll see you all again in September.
Thank you, sir. I don't know what else to add, a whole lot on that, except I don't think it's going in until another, you know, you'll be dealing with. But I have some important trials. There, uh, we have three roads that have had the mowing completed, have been accomplished, and that's, uh, MNI, LPU, but Globe, Cal-Noah, is that eight?
Cal-Noah.
In, uh, in six fifteen. Uh, they're working on Route six thirty five on the treatment that are overhanded, and, uh, they're going to put signage up, is that news correct, for here, and tractor trailers on up toward roads. So those are some of the things that came up after, well, over the last couple, few months. And with that, I make a motion to go into closed session in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A point of the Code of Virginia, I move that Board Supervisor convening closed session to consider a, a personnel matter involving the informant of legal counsel. Second, Libby.
Mr. Muskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
All right, please, to the actual.